Call the meeting to order, please. This is a Village of Riverside Board of Trustees regular meeting for Thursday, March 3rd, 2016. The time is 7:00 o'clock. Please call the roll.
President Salz.
Here.
Trustee Ballerine.
Here.
Trustee Longston.
Here.
Trustee Hamilton.
Here.
Village Manager Francis.
Here.
Village Attorney Mars.
Here.
Also, President Village Clerk Haley.
We have a quorum. Please rise for the village.
... to a flag of the United States of America and into the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I thank you and good evening to everyone who was here with us tonight and everybody watching at home. If you would like to make a comment to the board at any time during the meeting, you may do so. Just be recognized by the President and please make your remarks at the podium so that people at home can hear and see what you have to say. First up tonight are presentations and public comment. We have with us tonight Orion Galey and Rebecca Carney from Christopher Burke Engineering. Many of you probably have already seen over on Burlington the survey marks and the signs are starting to go up. We are going to be starting our Burlington streetscape and resurfacing project here in mid-March and Mr. Galey and Ms. Carney are here to give us an update. So Orion and Rebecca, please.
Thanks for having us tonight. Again, my name is Orion Galey. I'm your supervisor with Rebecca Carney. The two of us as well as another individual, Scott Soderstrom, will be handling the engineering for this project. We are more than willing and happy to take any questions that anyone may have after the meeting tonight. But I'm just here to give a brief update as far as the schedule and sequencing of the construction. As many of you know, it's been a long planned design project and we're really looking forward to finally getting it constructed here. The project was awarded by IDOT towards the end of last year and the low bidder that was subsequently awarded the project was ALAM Concrete Contractors Incorporated. For those of you who aren't quite aware of the process, IDOT is the owner on this project. They are contracting with ALAM to do the construction. The village is a local sponsor who will be sharing the cost of the construction. IDOT is participating approximately 75% of the cost or almost $2 million, so that's a great thing for the village. The...to date, we have had two pre-construction meetings already with the contractor, the first being at the Illinois Department of Transportation in Springfield and the second being here at the Village Hall. And the one we had here at the Village Hall, we did invite the Chamber of Commerce and local businesses to attend and give their input. And with that, the contractor is ready to start construction here very soon. It is a 75 working day contract and with IDOT contracts, you do not start charging working days until May 1st. So with a 75 working day contract, the projected completion date is September 13th. All parties involved are anticipating and hoping that we get the project completed before then, but that is what the contract allows. The anticipated start date is March 14th, so again, very fast approaching. And as early as next week, we may actually start removing the trees in the Central Business District that are scheduled to be removed. In the pre-construction meeting that we had with the Chamber and local business owners, it was determined that the sequencing of construction would be best suited for the businesses if we started on the south side of East Burlington. So we will be starting towards Landmark Kitchen and working our way clockwise more or less around the Central Business District. They will be starting again near Landmark Kitchen and we'll be removing the curb and gutter up to a point approximately five feet from the face of building. And we're doing that to maintain a five-foot access way to the buildings and businesses and storefronts during that construction so that patrons and whatnot can get to those businesses throughout construction. And all the businesses will be open throughout construction as well. So that first sequence will be then putting back all the curb and gutter, the porous pavers that we have planned to go in, the planters and the other streetscape accessories. Once that's in along the south side of East Burlington, the contractor will then remove that portion nearer to the building and put in the impervious pavers in that area. While they're doing the work on the south side of East Burlington, they'll also do that little leg that you see to the south on Long Common. And all of that work will be done before they start work on the north side of East Burlington. And during this construction, two-way traffic will be maintained throughout the time too to help minimize the disruption to those businesses. When we start the north side of East Burlington, more or less the same sequencing will go. We'll do half at one time and then the other half maintaining access to all the businesses throughout. And then once we're done with that, we will be resurfacing East Burlington all the way from Long Common to Harlem. While some of that work is being done in the Central Business District, there will also be some curb and gutter removal and minor sewer repairs east of the business district, but we don't really anticipate any of that conflicting with residents or businesses or anything like that. With the progress schedule that the contractor submitted with those 75 working days, it is showing approximately two and a half months to complete the south side of East Burlington, which would put us into early June. And then again, two and a half months to complete the north side of East Burlington, which would put us into mid to late August and then finishing the resurfacing by September 13th. Again, we're hoping that we are able to beat that deadline. We are also cognizant that during the 4th of July, there is a parade or whatnot on Long Common, so we're going to try to get all that work done, or at least as best as we can, to accommodate that event on 4th of July along Long Common there. Again, all businesses will be open throughout construction. Storefront access will be maintained throughout the entire project. Parking on the south side of the street during construction on the south side will not be allowed. Same goes for when construction on the north side. Parking on the north side will not be allowed. We do encourage that patrons, residents, et cetera, use the new green parking lot that's just east of the Central Business District and the other village lots that are very With one exception, Aunt Diana's, we're going to try to keep a couple spaces open in front of there before Easter so the people that want to get in and out of there can. So we'll be working to help accommodate that. We'll also be meeting with the businesses throughout construction to ensure that any concerns that they have are addressed during construction. We may alter some of what I'm telling you right now based on those concerns that the businesses have. But we do appreciate the patience of everyone during that construction. It's going to be a little bit of a mess during it, but we do feel very confident that the completion of the project is something we can all be very, very proud of. So thank you for your time. And again, if anyone has questions, we're all available to answer them. Business cards are with Jessica Francis, the village manager, and she'll be happy to hand them out. And you guys can give me a call if you want. With that, I think I'm done. So if anyone has questions, we'll be happy to answer them.
Any questions for Orion and Rebecca?
I have one question.
Please.
The parking that goes along the railroad tracks on the south side, those are Burlington spots? Those spots are owned by...the ones that go along the tracks all along?
Those are ours. We lease them from the NSF, so it's part of our lease agreement. And usually, those are predominantly utilized. There's a permitting process for businesses or patrons can utilize those spaces as well.
During the day, there's a considerable amount of those spaces are free. Can we tell our residents that they're welcome to park there for a limited period of time, whether it be an hour?
Sure. We can look at doing temporary restrictions in that particular area with regard to enforcement by the police department, obviously, if someone's parked there the entire day.
Right, right.
Versus parking the commuter. But we can look at having that just during the construction timeframe.
Anything else? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Just to emphasize a couple things that Orion just said. We are very fortunate to have Christopher Burke overseeing this project. There's going to be an engineer on site from Christopher Burke every single day of this project. There will be constant sidewalk access to all of our businesses and the street itself will be open to two-way traffic, except perhaps for one small amount of time when they're doing the resurfacing. But by and large, everything is going to be wide open and accessible on Burlington. So it's really important during this time period that we make a concerted effort, all of us, to support our local businesses on Burlington and Long Common. It's going to be inconvenient enough for them as it is, so let's make it a good time for them as well. So thank you very much. Next up is public comment. Would anyone like to address the board? Mr. Gallois.
The Chamber is very excited about the project, so I'd like to have the Chamber thank you. Good evening, Mr. President, trustees, those in attendance, and to those watching at home. Sir, I come before you and the village board tonight on behalf of Alliance Club. I have two items to speak of. The first item is to ask you to state the date for Sunday, August 17th, our annual chicken dinner.
April 17th.
That's right, April 17th. I'm looking forward to stopping. I'm sorry, I just wanted to skip this story. That chicken dinner in April will be held here at our town hall upstairs in the auditorium. It's our 12 hours for adults and six for children under the age of nine. And they are available from any Alliance member and they'll also be available at the door from 11:30 to 5:00. This is, of course, a fundraiser that we raise money for the deaf and the blind, but of course, it's also a really great social event to catch up with neighbors and other people you may not have seen during the season of hibernation. We will have cake. There'll be round prizes, so come prepared and have a great time. The other item I have to speak of is the Person of the Year. Each year, the Alliance Club honors a person who exemplifies volunteerism for the benefit of the community over a period of time. Previous honorees have been Gene Sussman, Ruth Brier, Joe DeVorec, and it goes back to the 1950s, Reed Henninger, L.J. Hauser. And we are asking for nominations to be sent privately by messenger to me on Facebook or my cellphone at 708-205-7428. And the deadline for that will be April 15th. That dinner will be in August. Do I have anything else, Mr. President?
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Anyone else like to address the board? Moving on to reports of village officers. First up is the village president's report and I have an honor this evening to appoint Mr. Patrick Smith Ray to the Historical Commission for a term to expire in 2019. He brings a wealth of experience in historical and archaeological research and is going to be a great asset to the commission. So I'd ask for a motion and a second to approve.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Longston, second by Samson. Any other discussion? Please call the roll.
Trustee Ballerine.
Aye.
Trustee Longston.
Aye.
Trustee Hamilton.
Aye.
President Salz.
Aye. And just before you go on, because we're going to be doing this a little different tonight because of the voting, Mr. Mars, would you like to explain why we're all having to vote?
Sure. As you may have noticed, there's only three trustees present tonight, but under state law, anytime that half of the members of a body, that being three trustees, vote in favor of a motion, resolution, or ordinance, the village president is entitled at that time to vote. So it can be the fourth vote in any instance where we have three votes in favor of something.
So that's reasonable. So Mr. Smith Ray is here this evening and Ms. Haley, if you'll do the honors, I'm swearing him in.
I just need to raise your hand if you have to.
Okay.
I, Patrick Smith Ray.
I, Patrick Smith Ray.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties.
And I will faithfully perform the duties.
Of the Office of Historical Commissioner.
Of the Office of Historical Commissioner.
For the Village of Riverside, Illinois.
For the Village of Riverside, Illinois.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Patrick, if you'd like to say a few words, you're welcome to. I can see...I see you brought your lovely family with you.
Yeah, I did. I brought a little fan club with me, but I'm certainly thrilled and excited to have this opportunity and to serve the Village of Riverside. I've been a lifelong history buff and had the opportunity to work as an archaeologist professionally. And as a relatively new Riverside-er, I couldn't be more than happy to serve on the Historical Commission, so I very much appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And thank you to the family for letting us borrow you.
(Laughter).
Thank you.
You know, the family has to go to all the commission meetings.
That is all I have this evening, Ms. Francis.
I have two items. I just wanted to notify the board that in April, staff will be providing you recommended revisions for the village code focusing on better management of construction site and requirement for site management bonds. The peak time for construction season within the village is nearly upon us and we want to be proactive and ensure that contractors are maintaining their work sites and also to minimize disruption to neighbors when there are work sites close to their property. Additionally, at our next board meeting, the Public Works Director, Ed Bailey, will be providing the board and residents an update with regard to the Saltwater Creek Sewer Interceptor Project that will be occurring throughout the village over a three-year period of time. And he'll provide an update with regard to staging, how it'll actually occur, who the contractor is, him as the point of contact for the village, et cetera. So that'll be at the next meeting. And that is it. Thank you.
Any questions about that? Thank you very much. Next up is the approval and consent agenda. Are there any items that the trustee needs to remove for discussion? Hearing none, I'd ask for a motion and a second to approve.
So move.
Motion by Ms. Hamilton.
Second.
Second by Mr. Ballerine. Please call the roll.
Trustee Ballerine.
Aye.
Trustee Longston.
Aye.
Trustee Hamilton.
Aye.
President Salz.
Aye. Motion carries. Next up, reports of departments, commissions, and trustee liaisons. Are there any liaison reports this evening? Mr. Ballerine, did you have one?
No.
Is that?
I have a report for the Economic Development Commission. They will be sponsoring, along with the Chamber of Commerce, a panel discussion on video gaming on March 22nd at 7:00 PM here at the township offices on the second floor in the auditorium. They will have panel speakers that include Tim Latner, Larry Forsberg, and Kathy Gilroy that will be representing some different ideas about video gambling. One of them is a former owner of a video gaming company. The other one is currently a part of the Westmont Chamber of Commerce president and he will be providing some insight into other municipalities and how they've dealt with video gaming and the impact it's having on their community. Kathy Gilroy is with the Illinois Church Action on Alcohol and Addiction Problems and the Northern Illinois Anti-Gambling Task Force and will be providing perspective of what the social costs and impacts are of video gaming. So the NBC is very happy to be providing this panel discussion, to provide some information about video gaming as we look into moving forward with that.
Thank you very much. You know, I did forget one thing. This Saturday is the pancake breakfast drive.
Yes, it is. Seven to one.
The pancake breakfast and the chicken dinner are the two things I look forward to. Tell her my passions lie. So if you like a good pancake, go to the pancake breakfast this weekend on Saturday. Next up, we go to ordinances and resolutions. First is an ordinance permitting the sign code of the Village of Riverside, Illinois relative to blade signs. Is that?
Thank you. As you know, the Planning and Zoning Commission spent several months reviewing sign regulations for the B2 zoning district back in 2014 and made the recommendations to the village board. After many further discussions and revisions, the village board adopted that sign ordinance in April of 2015. This new ordinance included allowing additional signage for the downtown in the form of blade signs. This was a recommendation of the CMAP plan as well as advocated for by the owners of 33 to 39 East Quincy Street. The sign code now allows second-story businesses to have a blade sign, however, requires that they be placed within six feet of a doorway serving the business. This mimics the language for directory signs for second-story businesses. The Planning and Zoning Commission had asked that staff bring the first applications for blade signs before them. We did that at their February meeting. The owner of 33 to 39 East Quincy submitted sign permits for blade signs for that building. Unfortunately, with the restrictions on second-story businesses, it has caused a bit of a problem for where he wants to place his blade signs. He currently has two second-story businesses and two first-story businesses, and if he were to do it per the code as it's outlined, there would be three signs within six feet of each other right around the front door. This would be very crowded, probably make some of the signs harder to read, and is not his preferred location for the signage. He would prefer to put one of the second-story business signs at the far end of the building, the far west end of the building, I should say. So staff also looked at some other buildings that this particular part of the code could impact and believes that this could have an impact on the Arcade Building due to the number of second-story businesses and the location of their main entrance being recessed from the sidewalk and the adjacent doors to the first-story business being right adjacent to that main entrance that you get into to the second-story businesses. So staff believed it would be prudent for the Planning and Zoning Commission to reconsider its recommendation for that restriction. So the Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed that proposed change along with the sign permit applications at their February 24th meeting. The proposed change would allow for the second-story businesses to have blade signs, however, it would remove the proximity limitation on where they can be located. So the proposed amendment that you have in the ordinance before you would read that such signs, meaning blade signs, shall only be located on the frontage of the establishment the sign identifies, except for second-floor businesses, which may install a blade sign on the first floor, provided it is located no closer than six feet to any other blade sign on the same building, and the location has been approved by the building owner. The Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend approval of that revision. They said they were not envisioning for the placement of blade signs to be crowded around a door, and so they were in favor of this proposed amendment. You have a copy of the ordinance that makes that change before you. You also have a copy of the proposed sign plan for that building for the blade signs as you consider this change.
So I'd ask for a motion and a second to approve an ordinance permitting the village code of the Village of Riverside, Illinois relative to blade signs.
So move.
Motion by Ms. Hamilton.
Second.
Second by Mr. Longston. Discussion, please.
Arcade Building is the only other building that this would?
That's the one that became most apparent that it might affect. We don't really have a lot of other buildings that have second-story offices in the downtown. With future redevelopment, that could be an issue, but at this time, that's the primary one that would be the other one that it could be a problem for. And specifically with that one, the fact that the door is recessed from the sidewalk and the two doors to floor and whatever tenant would go in the other corner, you'd immediately flank that main door. So they might not necessarily want a blade sign right there under the recess in front of their doors as well. So something to think of. That could be one where they might want some flexibility on where they could put those signs.
Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, please call them.
Trustee Ballerine.
Aye.
Trustee Longston.
Aye.
Trustee Hamilton.
Aye.
President Salz.
Aye. Motion carries. Next is a resolution authorizing the village manager to waive certain permit, license, and other fees relative to a build-out of a restaurant to be located at 2 East Burlington. Is that?
At the last meeting, we brought before you a preliminary proposal for requests for economic incentives for a proposed restaurant that is looking to locate in the village center and unit 2 East Burlington. They are asking for a waiver of the building permit fees based on their $1.5 million build-out costs for that particular unit. The board discussed the preliminary proposal at your meeting and you were all very pleased with the proposed restaurant concept in support of partnering with Pizza Barra by providing some economic incentives. Some trustees were hesitant about waiving some of the direct expenses. However, the village manager did explain that we would still be collecting a 1% non-home rule sales tax and that the property taxes collected would increase as the assessed value of that property went up with it being filled. The trustees did direct staff and the village attorney to finalize negotiations with the owners and prepare a resolution waiving the fees for your consideration. We have met with the owners and went over the fee waivers and have proposed a waiver of up to $49,600. This would include the building permit fees of up to $35,000. This includes building, plumbing, and electrical fees. Plan review fees for architectural and fire for the review of the plans. This includes the health inspections for the first three years, that would be $600. A waiver of their business license fees, which they also requested, that would be over three years, $300, and their liquor license fees, which would be $8100. This comes to a total of $49,600. Staff's reviewed the proposal, prepared an ordinance for you to review and approve. We do find that this meets all of the standards that were prepared as part of the previous resolution for waiving fees up to $10,000 since you granted the village manager the right to waive those fees if they met those standards. This is located in our B2 district. It will provide new revenue in the form of sales tax and places for eating tax. It is an identified use in our CMAP plan that is specifically wanted in the downtown. It will provide at least three employment opportunities. It will be a second location for an existing business, so it will be drawing from a larger community, and the proposed restaurant will fill a large vacant commercial space that has been vacant for approximately eight years.
So I'd ask for a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the village manager to waive certain permit, license, and other fees relative to the build-out of a restaurant to be located at 2 East Burlington.
So move.
Motion by Ms. Hamilton, second by Mr. Ballerine. Discussion.
Could you just outline what is the exact out-of-pocket cost? What does it actually cost us to do this? Not what we want...for example, if we waive certain fees, those are fees that they would pay us, those are not necessarily out-of-pocket costs because those fees we wouldn't...if it was empty, we wouldn't get. What is this actually costing us?
Approximately $5,600 for plan or new fees.
So I just want to make sure people understand, when we say $49,000, that's not the actual out-of-pocket cost.
Those are foregone fees.
Right.
Precisely.
And just to follow up on that, obviously, we will make every effort to even reduce that $5,600 amount. And our preliminary estimate in terms of the increased property taxes that we'll get because of the increased valuation of the building after the build-out is about $4,500 to $5,000 per year. So we would basically recoup that out-of-pocket expense in the first year just with the property tax, increased property tax. That doesn't even take into account that we'll be collecting our non-home rule sales tax in its entirety throughout the first three years as well. So thank you for bringing that up.
And I think the other thing that people don't understand is this is an established restaurant, which as it becomes more and more established, it's going to bring people in this town that have never heard of Floor, that have never heard of Field, that have never heard of Choo Choo, that have never heard of any restaurant we have in town or any business that we have in town. So I mean, the costs will be recouped in other ways just by sheer visibility. So I...you know, that's hard to put a figure on, but I think we're going to see an increase in overall business activity in our downtown with them. And as Ellen once said, we need to be bold.
And I don't mind you reminding me of that. Can I make a comment, please?
Please do.
I'm happy to be bold and I did want to say I'm very happy to vote for this tonight. We do not have a critical mass of commercial space in our downtown. It becomes very, very difficult to lure businesses here because we simply don't have enough commercial space in our downtown to keep people here and have a variety of businesses. And it's just very difficult for a small commercial area. You know, we're very, very small. So I think that the fact that Glenn Gardner and his company are willing to invest this kind of money in Riverside is just terrific. I'm happy to do whatever I can to bring them here. You just heard that this business...this building has been vacant for eight years, as has much other space in Riverside, which we hope to fill up. So I'm really happy for that. That being said, I have a question. Maybe somebody else has been to Pizza Barra, I haven't gotten out there yet. What's a coal-fired pizza? Is that like on charcoal or something? Or...I mean, it doesn't sound very...I mean, I've heard of wood-fired pizzas, but a coal-fired pizza sounds a little weird to me.
Yes, I think that's similar.
Charcoal, probably?
Tool would fire pizza, but I believe they use coal as opposed to wood to fire their brick oven that they use for.
Okay, okay.
And I can attest, when we went out and we looked at Mr. Labriol and Mr. R., and they brought out some of their pizzas for us to let us try them, and they are extraordinary.
I'm sure they're delicious. I've heard that from many people.
You notice how we didn't get an invitation to go to the dances?
Yeah, yeah.
But they were extremely gracious and one of the things that excited me about that meeting too was their civic might and this...I mean, as we talked more about the...we talked a lot about the sports teams we have in town, and that's one of the... and that's, that's one of the attributes of the, that this business will have, is, is a place where our sports teams could go to have a pizza after a soccer match or a baseball game or something like that. So, they're, not only are they excellent restaurateurs, but, you know, I think all three of us walked away feeling like they're going to be extremely good neighbors.
I think Riverside Little League's still looking for a couple more sponsors. If they, if they'd like to get a start with their advertising, get it out there.
I'll pass that along.
We will mention that.
Okay. Any other conversation, debate? Ms. Peters, did you want to say?
Oh, I didn't, yeah. Liz Peters, Economic Development Commission Chair. I just want to echo what you've been talking about and also reiterate for the board that the Economic Development Commission has been looking at this issue extensively. How do we develop businesses in this, in this town, and how do we grow the businesses and have sustainable businesses? And the plan that's been put together here and with the other incentive package has been something that I would say unanimously across our commission has been, is something that we would love to see happen. And we're all in favor of it, in part because it not only brings the business in, but it has the sustainability as well. And those are two aspects that we've talked about, and so we would wholeheartedly support this, and yes, we would love to have some of the pizzas, whenever, whenever it comes to town. So, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you, Chairwoman Peters. Anything else? Please call the roll.
Trustee Ballerine.
Aye.
Trustee Lumsden.
Aye.
Trustee Hamilton.
Aye.
President Sells.
Aye. Motion carries. Next up is an ordinance amending the Village Code of the Village of Riverside, Illinois relative to subdivisions of property within the village. Is that round three?
In September 2015, the village board enacted a six-month moratorium on new subdivisions. During this time, staff reviewed the existing codes, reconciled and clarified subdivision preservation code language, and assisted the Preservation Commission and Planning and Zoning Commission in drafting recommendations to address how to handle future applications for subdivisions moving forward, in addition to any code amendments necessary to the subdivision regulations and preservation code language. On January 11th, the Preservation Commission and Planning and Zoning Commission conducted a joint special meeting to discuss subdivisions and to edit staff's recommendation, recommendations to the Village Code as it relates to subdivisions. On the 27th of January and on the 24th of February, the Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed those proposed code amendments further and recommended approval to the village board. On February 11th, the Preservation Commission reviewed the proposed code amendments and recommended approval of them to the village board. So, some background on what those code amendments entail and what the discussion was. At the joint special meeting, the village attorney and I prepared a memo highlighting the issues the commission should discuss and possible ways to amend the code to incorporate those recommendations. So, primary issues were dealing with originally platted lots, determining what the village wants to preserve or protect. Is it originally platted lots? Is it lot density and lot size? Is it neighborhood character? And what the subdivision rules should be specifically for properties containing landmark structures. There were also some procedural changes that the village attorney had identified that should be considered. At the joint meeting, it was decided that those would be deferred to the Planning and Zoning Commission to discuss further and make recommendations, which they did. The commissioners primarily discussed the village's national landmark designation and the need to protect that. They also discussed landmark structures and the need for protecting of those. Generally, the commissioners concluded that the protection of our national landmark designation should be included as part of the subdivision ordinance's purpose and intent. The commissioners also recommended that the Preservation Commission should review all proposed subdivisions for their impact on the village's national landmark designation and on any landmark structures. They determined that the Preservation Code reference to importance, references to the importance of preserving the originally platted lots should be amended to move the focus away from originally platted lots and rather emphasize the importance of protecting our national landmark designation. Another recommendation was to keep lot consolidations in the definition of subdivisions, so any lot consolidation would also be considered a subdivision and would require that further review by the Preservation and, Preservation Commission and Planning and Zoning Commission. Staff incorporated those recommendations from the joint meeting into a draft text amendment for further review and consideration. As I said, the Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed those changes as well as the Preservation Commission. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended that a definition of the general plan be added to the right, to both the subdivision regulations as well as the preservation ordinance. So, that has been added. There will also be an image update, so it's a slightly better quality than what is currently in our ordinance, so it'll be a little bit more legible. Hopefully, we'll be able to work with the codifier to make sure that that, that picture is of a good quality. One of the other concerns that was brought up as part of the process was the timing of the meetings. The Planning and Zoning Commission had said they thought it would be very important for the pres, to hear what the Preservation Commission's input is on something prior to them reviewing it. Typically, this is not going to be an issue because the Preservation Commission meets at the beginning of the month and the Planning and Zoning Commission meets at the end of the month. So, we should be able to have those comments ready for them by the time they are seeing the proposed subdivision. Some of the other things that the Planning and Zoning Commission decided to add as part of the kind of process and approval of subdivisions was adding in that landmark structures need to be identified on the plat, that also adding that trees, preservation of trees should be included as part of a subdivision. So, they added that protecting them to the most degree possible is part of the regulations or requirements for subdivision, and then as part of their submitting materials on the plat of survey that they submit, that they do need to identify trees of a certain size on that plat, so that they can verify which ones can be saved and, and which ones are not going to be saved, and make any recommendations in that regard. The other item on there was that a certificate of appropriateness is now proposed to be required for any proposed subdivision of a landmarked structure. So, not only was subdivisions added, that Preservation Commission would review any proposed subdivision, it was further added as a certificate of appropriateness trigger. So, now, certificate of appropriateness is just for demolitions or any sort of exterior building alterations that would require a building permit. Now, it will also say, or a proposed subdivision of a landmarked property. You have before you an updated ordinance. The village attorney and I noticed some areas where or subdivisions should be added to the language as well in the preservation ordinance, so the updated ordinance before you has that additional language. There are some other places where it was appropriate to add any building permit work or subdivision, just to make sure that it's clear in there what is required for subdivisions as part of the certificate of appropriateness language. That is basically it. You have before you copies of the minutes from both the Preservation Commission and the Planning and Zoning Commission meetings. We did provide you the links to some of those meetings where that discussion was had. You have the ordinance before you that amends both the preservation ordinance as well as the subdivision regulations, which is a chapter within the building code. I'm here to answer any questions that you have. I did provide you some supplemental materials. This was some of the materials that was provided to the Planning and Zoning Commission at that, and the Preservation Commission at their joint meeting. And you have a map that shows the originally platted lots. Now, granted, the Planning and Zoning Commission did, and the Preservation Commission moved away from singling out originally platted lots for being protected and moved it more to protecting our national landmark designation. I think it is important to point out that one of the conditions, or the first condition for approving a subdivision is that, let me get to the page here, and I can read it for everybody to hear, is that no subdivision shall be approved that would negatively...
Where are you at?
This is going to be page four in the updated subdivision, or updated ordinance that was provided to you. This is 4-8-5A for requirements for subdivision. No subdivision shall be approved that would negatively impact the village's national historic landmark, landmark designation, or landmarks listed in Section 11-1-5 Appendix D., which is our list of designated landmarks of this code. And subdivisions that are contrary to the general plan's preference for large residential lots should be approved only after careful consideration of the current character of the immediate area. So, that is the ordinance you have before you. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. If you have any questions about what could be subdivided, how many lots are subdividable, I can certainly answer those questions for you.
So, I would ask for a motion to approve an ordinance amending the Village Code of the Village of Riverside, Illinois relative to subdivisions of property within the village.
Okay.
Motion in a second, please.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Ballerine.
Second.
Second by Ms. Hamilton. Conversation.
First of all, I'd like to thank the cable for televising the Planning and Zoning Commission, because that was very helpful. I got to watch that a couple of times. Because it took a couple of times to watch it. One of, one of the things that, why didn't we just say you can't subdivide historic properties? I mean, it seems like we're, we're, we're leaving, I mean, I think one of the argu, I, I go back to the last few subdivisions that we were talking about and, that, that kind of brought about this, and I think some of the problem that we have was the ambiguity that we had written in the code on whether you can do it or not. It had to be 11,000 square foot lots, or what. Or if we would have just said, you cannot subdivide historical properties, that would have solved, that would have shut the door right there. I mean, I don't know why we're not being so...
You mean historical properties or landmark properties?
Landmark, landmark properties.
The, at the joint meeting, as they were discussing that, that was one of the initial thoughts that the commissioners had, was to just ban subdivisions outright for any landmark property. In the end, they kind of came full circle on that. It was the opinion of some of the preservation commissioners, and it was echoed by other commissioners as well, that there's enough regulation, additional regulation placed on a landmark home that can dissuade somebody from wanting to purchase that or maintain that home, that they didn't want to be unduly burdensome on those homeowners, that would make it unattractive to purchase a landmarked property. And so, they didn't want to add that extra step that, no, there's no chance for you subdividing it either, when we don't say that for any other property in town. So, in the end, they decided that requiring it to go through the process and giving them that extra bit of scrutiny of being able to look at it through the certificate of appropriateness and check whether or not the proposed subdivision would have an impact on the landmark structure, and then be able to deny the subdivision based on, on that criteria, was the way they wanted to go. So, they don't necessarily foresee that they would ever be in favor of subdividing a landmark property. However, they didn't want to just do an outright ban on it.
I, I, I don't know. I find that disingenuous. I think if, if somebody wants to buy a landmark property, they should know. I can't see the Preservation Commission in any form of membership would ever say, yeah, yeah, that's, that's okay. You can, you can split up this piece of property. I just don't see it. So, we might as well just say you can't do it. I just don't, I, that, that to me strikes as I'd rather be, I'd rather say, yes, you can do it, or no, you can't do it, and have criteria that says that. I don't know why, I mean, I just, that's my thought. You know, and if we have rules that in R1AA, the, the property has to be 75 foot wide, well, those are our rules. So, if it's, if it's not 75 foot wide, then you can't split it.
Correct.
If it's more than 75 foot wide and it's not a landmark property, why would we tell them they can't split it?
And it's not a landmark property.
It's not a landmark property. If there's a piece of property in R1AA that's 200 feet, why would we say you can't split it if it's not a landmark property?
We don't.
So, I mean, it's, it's, I mean, I think we're, we're putting a lot of stuff in here where we could just be very, much more simpler by saying, if it's historical, you can't do it. If it's, if you're in R1A and you have a 100-foot property, it's not historical, like the house on Blacklock, that, and it fits into the neighborhood, yeah, you can do it. I don't, it just seems like we're, we're, we're being awfully wordy and, and, and leaving, I think we're leaving holes open that we shouldn't be clogging up.
I guess the only thing I would say that is that if you look on page two, under the purpose and intent, I mean, they, and, you know, what you're talking about, what you saw in the meeting, I mean, both Preservation and Planning and Zoning talked about this very issue at length, and came up with wanting, wanting to handle it this way. And so, landmarks are specifically listed as one of the things giving, given particular attention in terms of whether or not, in terms of protection. So, I mean, in fact, the, one thing that I would just as an aside, offers on page five in paragraph, paragraph E, after historic sites, I would repeat the same language that's on page two with regard to lands, landmarks, just so that we have the...
We had that there before, and the Planning and Zoning Commission thought that that was not strong enough in that section, which is why they asked for it to be moved to A, for it to specifically say, no subdivision shall be approved that would negatively impact a historic landmark listed in 11-1-5.
But if you're, if you're listing the same criteria, it seems to me that you should list the same criteria.
Mm-hmm. So, we can certainly add a fact to that as well.
My suggestion would be to, if you're going to mimic the language in those two paragraphs, I would conclude everything. And to Mr. Ballerine's point, I think we want to make it crystal clear that we, that we intend to protect our landmark properties.
Mm-hmm.
So, trustees, do you, are you fine with that?
I'm okay with the ordinance as written.
Yeah, again, I, I watched the televised case as well. I thought that they went through a very thorough process. It was domestic launching, come and pull, so. And again, I guess I don't have an issue with plugging the hole completely in case there's a really, really cool opportunity that comes up that is within line with our historical desires and our neighborhood attitude. I'm, I'm pretty happy with the way it's presented to us right now.
I mean, I really do think the commission's done an extraordinary job, along with staff in preparing this, and they, those were exhaustive, exhausting discussions. I can testify to that. So, anything else?
President Sells?
Yes.
I just wanted to point out for the benefit of Trustee Ballerine that, you know, what you're saying about the prohibition versus certificate of appropriateness, that's, the, the way that we ended up doing it is the exact same way that demolitions of landmark structures are currently treated. So, you could say, why would we ever tear down a landmark structure? But it's set up, and it has been set up since its inception, that that is a possibility. If the circumstances were right and the Preservation Commission felt it was appropriate, they could give a certificate of appropriateness in that case. And I think that's kind of where people ended up on, on this same thing, that there may be circumstances, unlikely as it may sound, where a subdivision might be appropriate.
So, one of the things that was brought up at that meeting was, what if a landmark structure fell into severe disrepair or burnt down, you know, and would need to be rebuilt, which might be cost prohibitive? And then this would give the owner the option, if it was a subdivision of a lot, meaning that it met the minimum requirements of the zoning ordinance, to afford them the opportunity to go through that process.
Are we there?
Okay. Yeah, I mean, the other part of this thing that just, and I know that the Planning and Zoning Commission talked about it a lot, is, is the trees.
Mm-hmm.
I guess it says we should try to do it, I mean, but, I would, I, I don't, it just seems like if someone's got a, someone has a piece of property and they subdivide it and they can't subdivide it, they're going to build the house within the restrictions that we have, and if it, you know, quite frankly, if a tree falls in within those restrictions, you know, or, you know, outside that, that parameter, they're going to, they're going to take the tree down. I mean, if we want to save trees, I, I don't know how we, I don't know how putting it in here is going to do it, but I guess, I guess you just want to make the point that we want to save trees.
Please call the roll.
Is this, just to clarify, is this with the change President Sells suggested?
I did, are, do, does that change, okay, to add in the landmark language on page five that exists on page two? Just to make them, let me...
You did.
I did.
Yes. So, do you like to amend your motion?
So, I would amend my motion to, to include the language.
Okay. Please call the roll.
Trustee Ballerine.
Aye.
Trustee Lumsden.
Aye.
Trustee Hamilton.
Aye.
Village President Sells.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. App.
Thank you.
Excellent work by the staff and all the commissions and all this.
Yes, they worked very hard on this.
They certainly did, as did you.
Mr. Foley, did you?
I, I, yes.
Welcome back to the environment. You guys can see you did.
Thank you. Good evening. Michael Foley, 411, Selbourn. Good evening, Mr. President, Village Manager Francis, trustees, and people. Couple of questions about the thing you just voted on. We have about 60 pro- We have about 60 properties that this whole thing revolves around, out of a town of, what, several thousand properties. Through the discussion that, that led up to us changing this, I kept hearing a lot about density, 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 too big, houses and mansions, they're too big. Two things. One, if I was an owner of one of those 60 properties and you guys just did this, but you didn't tell me we're going to do it, what kind of a problem is that? You just changed the ordinance on the property that I own, but I didn't get a notice about it. That's one thought. Two, I like trustee Ballerine's idea of just making it real simple with no historical properties, but an idea that I had had a while ago was find your largest lot. Because we know that a lot has to have, a minimum lot has to be 10,500 square feet, right? There's a house being built or a fence around a property on Blooming Bank across from the Swim Club, that's not 10,500 square feet, and they're putting a house on it. Now that property, I don't know the history of it, if it was parcelled off from another piece of property. That's an awfully small house, it's going to be on a very, very small lot. If you want to make this problem less intrusive, I would increase the size of the buildable lot. I would take it to, I don't know, find your largest lot of the 60, divide it in half, add 10 square feet to it, and there's your number. And unless you can meet that, then you can't subdivide. But I think that subdivision is also tied to buildable coverage and the density that the house sits on the lot. We currently allow, there is 25% coverage of a lot. And I hate to use, my home is an example, but I'm at 19% coverage. If I went to 25% coverage, my house would be way bigger than it already is now. So if we don't want this huge house thing going on, I think that one of the things that we need to look at is coverage and lot size. You want more green space, increase the lot size. You want less density, reduce the building envelope size of the property, and that'll get you to where you need to be. If you look at the 60 properties out there right now, and if you were to try and dice them evenly up, some of that 60 probably wouldn't even work. And now some of them might have an historic tree sitting on it, and I can't cut the tree down, and it's right in the middle of my new living room. So I think we need to look at the density in tune with the size of the lot. And that's just my opinion about it.
Thank you very much. Okay. There are no considerations this evening. Does anyone have any new business? We do not have need for an executive session this evening, so I'd ask for a motion and a second to adjourn.
Motion adjourned.
Motion, Mr. Lumsden.
Second.
Second, Ms. Hamilton. Please call the roll.
Trustee Ballerine.
Aye.
Trustee Lumsden.
Aye.
Trustee Hamilton.
Aye.
President Sells.
Aye. Meeting is adjourned. Good night.
Michael, I...